You don't have to get up.
Don't get up.
What's coming out?
Well, Tammy said I didn't have to be here, but I like to listen anyway.
Good, how are you, sir?
David Wilson with the Kansas Firefights Museum.
Alex with Parks and Recreation.
Alex keeps me out of trouble or at least let me know when trouble's coming.
Try to do both.
You always need a good right-hand person, left hand.
Right.
Or both hands or whatever the case may be.
Little bit, little bit of all three. Usually it's, hey, this is coming up. Here's how to avoid it. Also, here's how to fix it.
I had you my first thirty years.
Well, he's just being nice. I'm sure I can be a handful. As of right now, everyone is supposed to be here. I haven't gotten any absent alerts.
Sorry, what was that?
As of right now, everybody should be here. I haven't gotten any absent alerts. Do you want me sending the invite to Fire Chief Snow so she can forward it to her people, the park board meeting? I didn't think about it until right now.
She should know the time. We talked about it. So I think it is probably our reason to let everyone know that this come.
More so mean the, for the virtual meeting.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to say that if they wanted to log in.
No table today? They set out extra for you guys.
Is there any specific information they're looking for with the table? They just want to see the actual.
Um, I sent, I sent Troy the agreement and all of my communications I've had so far. Date of execution. Except the first payment. I'm just a little irritated by the situation because I was under the impression that Troy, our Troy, had been in contact with him about the agreement. And I assumed he'd seen it, but it sounded like Jay just never saw the agreement in the first place.
Troy is wanting to do the five years that he made the first. And they're wanting it from the original.
Right. Yeah. So regardless of what happened, I'm sure I'm going to have to take it back to council. It's not really a valid contract. He's donating and we're going to keep doing, we're going to keep doing the improvement, but I don't know.
How far behind were we on it? Because we could find out early in this year that it hadn't been signed.
No, so I took it to council at the beginning of this year because we just had never made any progress on getting it. Um, and I just found out a couple of weeks ago that it was never actually signed in January. Okay, yeah. I don't want to, but I kind of stood off to ten for public works to take care of it. And I kind of just assumed they were going to take care of the whole. Never sent me a finalized agreement, no one ever. Me being stressed out person that I am just didn't follow up on it. So I mean, so it's my fault for not following up, but also I just normally when I pass things off to public works, they take care of the entire thing. So it's just, it's just a frustrating situation.
Hopefully we did it all worked out. Hopefully we don't have to go back to council.
Right. Exactly. The, the agreement is more for us to say, well, if we're going to do these improvements, we want to verify that you're actually going to finish banking the payments. So, but, but it does also protect him because it ensures that we're actually going to do what we say we're going to do. So right now, I mean, right now, work is operating on a good faith. Which fine, most of the time like, but it, yeah. So we'll see what. I, like I said, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with him just so he knows what the situation is because he probably is just like, what is this? Yeah, Troy, he, he had no idea. He just, Jay emailed him to say, hey, what's going on? I'll sit down with him to explain the situation if I need to. It's confusing and I, I'm ready to be done with it.
Just kind of.
Quite email back.
So they will just know that Shannon, so that they can do it as a marketing.
Oh, did you see Shannon?
So you'll snipe in there. It'll be, I'll have it. It's already prepped up here. So. There, you'll be after Shannon. Yours will be right here. I'll prep it up for you as you walk up and then you can read off the screen. Your pictures and everything up there. Then you'll be good. And then if there are any pictures or questions or anything, you can do your best to answer. We'll jump in if we know the answer for some. We got you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Cut you up in your normal seat. That's okay. Oh, I think I might have switched you in camp. Sorry. You can switch. I can switch you back. Would you like me to? I can move you again.
Sitting in the same chair for the last two years.
You forget where you go.
I didn't want to go to work, but it's naughty things. So I'll fix some problems. City.
Better than the most.
You have a white.
I'm good.
Okay, you sure?
Yes.
Are you meeting?
Hello, James. Hey, once I decide to get here, it takes like three weeks to find the time to actually go for twenty minutes.
You could use another adjective. We'll let you. We're back in a couple. We need to try back the. The bait. I don't have any doors. If you do, then I'll be done.
Reggie. Sorry, I was trying to put my hands and drop them all away. Like the jackets, please.
Is it good?
Yeah.
I don't know why the answers kind of transition.
Yeah.
Is there alcohol in this?
We should just post it now. So. We're making a transition because it's on the twenty-first.
There, internal candidate's federal that you're considering?
Well, actually, uh, nationally.
Oh, good.
It's one of the things with that, those position, national assistant rec or rec position, normally they will have people that are internally that supply and flow. I'm still doing my job.
Busy. Yeah, busy. Yeah.
The notes are good. This would be the one you mind.
Okay. So like program that I lead has worked on it for a bunch of years and. It was like, I sold, I managed like loans that's pretty invested in things. And it was taken them like. Better even in a loan. I, when I came in, I was like ninety days tops. They're like, yeah, we're doing it. Now it's like, we'll come into this where it's like, we have a first round of ninety day considerations. That's like. Hell, we're going to do this or not. Like, oh, you're going to drag this out six months. Like, it shouldn't take us six months to consider whether we're going to support something or not, right? So folks are like, okay, that's what you mean.
I still need to visit, looking to see when we start.
Yeah, I know. I know. I got a meeting with, uh, hey, to talk a little bit about it. I got some time on tomorrow soon.
This is okay.
So we'll do board or budgets and stuff. We start working on this month. Sign them August, November with an October approval. We got to get things in now. Those that even considering, you know what I mean? It's just.
No reason good for me or.
Yeah, I think the materials you provided are great. I think you're more than likely to want to, at some point, connect with you and Brandon. And he knows Brandon. Phil, how you doing, sir? Monday. Still good though. Can't believe it's already the, almost halfway through July.
Right now you're putting, putting pocket on, shivering to the door.
Yes. If word ever come through on that thing, on the, on the, um. Support that. Uh, they take a trip every year to different cities to learn and stuff like that. This is trip instead of Detroit. Oh, I'm going to drive, go to the trip. It's not from my director that I want to stand, but like, that'd be something. Connect with, you heard a thing? Like maybe your agent, yeah. Maybe the agent can say, hey, here's the thing, right? And I should know the house foundation.
Take it all.
Well, I mean, or whatever it is, right? I mean, let me just say, Brandon asked. Definitely. Phil in person, nobody shows up.
What's that?
We got Phil in person and nobody shows up.
I hear last in person, said online, but I had to go to my facility in Oregon, babe.
Oh, you're good, man.
I had an employee that said he wanted to go and wash filters out of the parking lot. Okay, how about the city of Albert, Oregon? Heads up, there was this much water in the parking lot with oil sheen. Of course, who goes driving by when he does this? City of Alabama, Atlanta.
I don't have access to a jar. I don't even.
Twenty-seven people. It should have no problem. No traffic issues.
Oh, yeah. Fun.
Well, I offered to brief you. You didn't reply to me, sir.
No, it was good, man. I, I, I felt like we were at a, I read through the things too. I, you know, I knew, I saw who we were going to be reviewing, so it was. Not at all. I meant to reply and it was just, I got caught up with everything. But, uh, no, I think, are we announcing, did we pick somebody for the consult, for the master plan?
Haven't finalized everything with it yet.
Okay, perfect. So all that you updated us then on that.
So next month you probably should have a fall.
So then next month we should all come with a plan on how we're going to engage our.
Better. Are you feeling better?
So next year we'll, we'll have a, we'll need a committee place. How many people?
No numbers on it yet.
The next.
Over two. We had to see each other.
Phil, I feel like you were involved super early on, man.
Was.
Yeah, you should, you should stay on. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be off in January, so I probably should not be on.
I said so.
Council member Johnson's out, turned out. So, so I mean, I'm assuming any news that they're in council, they had. Also forgot this thing for eight years, dude. Yes. Is the end of, uh, yeah. So I don't know what the official, how the link was like. Get me out, you know? Which is fine. I've had enough. The city's probably had enough of me anyways.
Get a point, something else.
That's true. I don't know. We'll see. Huh. Well, Nate, what happens, uh, if this is the party? There wasn't anything that we needed action on, was it? I guess I wasn't totally sure, but if we're at the point of like, just listing some sort of, say, recommendation regarding the renaming. It didn't seem like the Eagle Project one was to that point, but again, I'm not entirely sure. So.
Just an update on what they already completed. So anyone that wants to need a vote and they're supportive of his thing.
Hasn't ready for that now. I wasn't totally sure. I've worked on it like a few months ago, but.
We'll have to take it to council before Friday.
I think maybe something we could do is if you guys like it or whatever, we do a special, uh, meeting and call, like a team's meeting of the verse. That kind of recommendation if we want to move forward quicker. It's really loud for once. Sorry. Yeah, I know. It's like, there's nobody up here, but like. But, uh. Yeah, exactly right. So you can just do that and. Quick teams meeting. Yeah, exactly right. So he can make a, I could second it and we could vote online. Uh, we'll just need to call a special meeting, yeah, of everybody. Or you can make the motion. You'll make the motion at the, at the. Yeah, because we just don't have a forum to take action. So it is you who will be recommending it. So. Or like, write it down. He's going to make a recommendation. I'll second him.
He'll say that he's supportive of it.
Yeah, no, most definitely. Most definitely. Any comment you want to make. Exactly right. Because I think we did somewhat recently anyway. Yeah, perfect. Well, then we.
How do I?
Yeah. Okay. Well, then, uh, we will, uh, we'll call a meeting in order. Uh, because we don't have a quorum, we're just receiving. Is that correct, Nate? Yeah. Oh, we will jump, uh, we'll invite, uh, Jackson Jones, uh, for the Eagle Project presentation. Are you here yet? Okay. And Chief Snow, we invite you to the front.
And.
Nice two attachments.
Uh, because we don't have a full, a quorum, what we'll, I guess we can discuss it at, at, once she's done. All right. Well, we're, we're, we're going to get, we're going to make sure we got this. We'll let you continue with your presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to present today. What I'm here to talk to you about is, uh, first of all, I want to give Megan Lovely a shout out because she put the PowerPoint. Presentation together really quick for us. So truly appreciate her work efforts. Um, but what I'm going to talk to you today about is, um, I was here last year and spoke with you in regards to Lincoln Park. And the Kansas Fallen Firefighters Memorial and asked for your support or the foundation support, uh, park board foundation support in helping us do some fundraising of kind of what our, what our vision was. So what I'm here today to do is to ask you, um, or just to inquire, gain your approval for, uh, a naming change. So, um, we've been pursuing some options and some funding opportunities to transform that particular park, Lincoln Park, into the Kansas Fallen Firefighters Memorial Park. And what we've been asked to do or what, what our goal is, is to simply make it more honoring and, uh, reflective of firefighters. Uh, Lincoln Park, uh, was actually named after Lincoln Street. And, uh, from our research, there's no other nostalgic or meaningful association with the name of the park. Uh, so we're asking to change the name to officially to the Kansas Fallen Firefighters Memorial Park. Um, if you approve, um, signage would be installed reflecting the new name change. Um, if you approve, the next steps would be to take it to city council and get their approval also. Uh, reason for the enhancements or the proposed park enhancements that we have as our vision is just actually, like I said earlier, an opportunity to honor and recognize fallen firefighters. Uh, change the park so it becomes a fire-themed park, um, provide some elements of education about firefighting and fire safety. Uh, put a fire-themed slash plaque in and then add to the security. We recently had a repeat on the museum, uh, that we had to clean up. And then we recently had a car run into, um, and it's basically fake, but ran into the bottom portion of the actual statue, which we can replace the granite. If it would have busted any part of the statue, uh, we would have been out of luck as far as replacing it. Um, here's a couple of renderings for, uh, uh, of what potential signs would look like. Um, basically they look the same except for the colors of the blue and the black. Um, we have a committee that's been together. This is kind of the last time that we're together, kind of like these. We haven't picked on one specific design, but that's, it just kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. And then finally, uh, thanks to Brent, he, um, provided his services for your charge and helped, uh, come up with this rendering, uh, of what the park would, would look like. So it's, uh, the official, I mean, uh, I think it's big enough that you can see kind of what our intentions all day. And with that, then I'll stand for questions.
Okay. Um, I do have a question, Chief Snow. How, how is the fundraising gone with, uh, the Park Foundation?
Uh, we haven't actually started any fundraising. Yeah. Uh, what our thoughts were, was, um, just recently the governor signed, uh, Senate Bill one ninety-nine, which is a bill that has two parts to. just recently, the governor signed, uh, Senate Bill one ninety-nine, which is a bill that has two parts to it. The first part happens to be for the formation of the Kansas Fallen Firefighters Memorial Committee. Uh, she has authorized the actual committee to be moved down to, uh, Wichita and recognize Wichita as the official, uh, memorial. So what our original plans was, uh, was to do a big kickoff ceremony at our memorial on October the fifth. Um, have the governor come down, do an official signing, um, reveal the name of the park, the new name, if it gets approved, of the park, and then kickoff fundraising at that time. The governor's not gonna be able to make the October fifth, date, and so now we're trying to work with her office to find out when she can come down. And the intention again would be for her to come down, um, unveil the new name of the park and do an official fun, fundraising kickoff at that time. And then that's the reason why we have the picture, these pictures, cuz we'd like to then display the picture and start to get spying.
How much, what's the goal? Do you have a fundraising goal?
Originally, when we started talking about this, we, and we haven't put an official number to it, we figured we'd probably eventually, um, have to raise somewhere around seven million dollars. And we know we're not gonna do that right away, so we thought we would do it in phases, and we haven't broken it down into phases yet.
Um, where is? Thank you. Um, so what we'll do, Phil is, this is Phil's district, so we'll, we'll have to call a special meeting with the, virtual meeting with our, uh, other commissioners. Phil will make a motion, we'll second it, and, um, we'll take a vote at that time. Um, Nate, she doesn't have to be present, Chief Snow doesn't have to be present, does she?
Uh, no, uh, and the nice thing about having this recorded, well, we can have the information available, we can have the presentation available, but if you'd like to, obviously, um, as well, we'll try to make that information available, um, as well. Yeah, so it'll just be a meeting focused on that particular issue, so we can help move things along when we're in the other.
Very good. Um, one other thing that I'd like to present, I sent a note to, uh, the park board, uh, in regards to the Kansas Fallen Firefighters Memorial Committee that the governor has, uh, created. Um, the part of the, they had, the, the committee used to be, the original state committee was in Topeka. And for over a few decades, it became stagnant. Uh, so that's why we were able to convince the governor to co, to, uh, recognize the Wichita Firefighters Memorial as the state official memorial. Uh, she made a nine-person committee, and one of those members is a representation from this park board. Uh, on behalf of councilmember Holkheiser, he, uh, spoke with, uh, Philip Simon and said that Philip would, uh, volunteer, graciously volunteered to serve on that committee. Um, so I presented a letter with his name on that, and, um, I guess I'm asking, will any guys meet or vote? If that's something that you would vote on also.
And I would just like to say as well that, uh, the Parks Direct team have been meeting with Chief Snow and, uh, their team, and how we move forward with this, and we're supportive of it, and we think it's gonna be a big improvement for the park. It gets us to activate it and make it a good amenity for the community, so we're supportive moving forward as well.
That's great. Congratulations, Phil and Chief Snow. It's great.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, uh, I don't see any continuation of prior business, and did, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak, Alex?
And why we did it on vacation?
Yeah, they're still, they're still at the lake or something, uh. All right, Brandon, you're up, sir.
Doesn't it look like Nate's Boy Scout is here? He knew to be here, so. I don't know if there was something that.
It's not here, really, it shouldn't.
No, so.
That's the Eagle Project, man. Seen enough of it.
Yeah, they sent it in and they knew. Um, so.
Expect to see if the next.
Like, I have everything, so it's, it's not, we have it whenever they do decide to make it, so.
That really happened.
All right, good afternoon. First, I'm gonna go through the, uh, through the financials real quick, uh, through June of this year. As far as the revenue, so we're looking really solid. And actually, looking at the revenues, they're both, uh, recreating, money maybe in recreation, we're looking at, um, we've made, we have generated more revenue from January to Ju, January to June this year than we did for the same time period last year. And we've had pretty good, pretty strong, uh, aquatic season so far through June, um, even with the, uh, the rain events we've had. Far as expenses, so we're still looking pretty steady. I would expect this percentage to actually be a little bit higher, so running lower than what, um, under, uh, than what, than what I would anticipate. And we are spending actually less money from January to June in both maintenance and the recreation side than we did for the same period last year. So we're making more spendings. For our South February, so we're looking really strong. And it was golf, golf is, uh, has definitely, uh, I think, definitely recovered from the, uh, January, February, kind of a slower start. I'll let Jeff go for the details, the ramp play and everything, but as far as, that's the revenue and the expenditures relaxing. Uh, it's all been pretty good news. Um, also, the expenditures well below that fifty percent. Um, and then also our unencumbered cash, uh, ending in January, uh, or ending in June the thirtieth, about one point four, almost one point five million. Again, at the end of the year, anything over one million dollars, we can sweep into the projects, use those for project funding. And that one point four eight million is actually more than what we had in the unencumbered cash for this period last year. So despite the, the slow start for doing great. Uh, we gotta read the whole talk. With that, I will pause for any questions.
Great.
All right, thanks, guys.
It's amazing. All right, we got, uh.
You're doing great.
Yes.
We like lost recovery.
Yes. Been not good?
No, I just, there was definitely communication.
Oh, is there? No, I, I got social media first.
Oh, we feel communication off because we tend to make communication and directors the same thing.
Cool.
You guys read you on TikTok yet?
It's been broken for. Here are the updated follower count. I've always been steadily going up a little bit on several of these pages. Um, Park and Red, Great Plains and Kansas Wildlife Exhibit grew the most over the past month. For the park and recreation page, the number one post from last month was the ribbon cutting at Clap Park. We did open this brand new playground, uh, fully inclusive. I got the chance to go out there myself, and it looks very cool. Um, excited to take my kiddo to it soon. Um, then post, um, after the fact, after the ribbon cutting was done, raised sixty-five thousand people. Uh, nearly six hundred interacting with it, including a hundred fifty-six comments and a hundred and sixty-two shares. So that's pretty exciting just to see that everyone's getting the word out about this new amenity. For OJ Watson Park, we, um, talked about the floating on the kayak, floating on the River Kayak tours that are coming back this year. We had to take them off last year, um, but they're back and better than ever. We reached about two thousand people with this post, twenty-one interaction, um, including ten shares. For Nelson Park, in beginning of June, we had this celebration in our women's sports event. Um, this post reached two thousand people, ten interactions plus eight shares. Open Streets, um, jumping ahead to the September event, we're calling out for volunteers for that event. Um, this post reached eleven hundred people, uh, and eleven people did click through on that link, so hopefully we got some new volunteers out of that post. And then golf, the top post was about Auburn Hills announcing some course maintenance that's coming up. Um, so that, so that was just keeping, keeping golfers involved and, and aware of what's going on. Um, overall, though, the page reach for the Golf Wichita page was outstanding. It was up to about two hundred thousand people reached just last month alone, which is about five hundred percent from the previous month, so. But it was all. And I will stand for any questions you might have.
Phil? You have marketing update? Hey, there you are.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk to you about our free community events. Uh, Wichita Park Recreation brings people together year-round hosting community events. These events are free, family-friendly, hosted citywide. By hosting these events to the public, Wichita Park Americans promoting health, culture and connection. Thousands of residents are served annually. Uh, just this month, uh, Red White and Boom saw over four thousand people. And typically, Open Streets ICT on Douglas Avenue has seen up to thirty-five thousand people in attendance in that four-mile stretch. As we plan and execute these large-scale community events, supporting recognize the key areas where we invest our resources to ensure they're safe, organized and memorable for all attendees. We group our event expenses into three main categories. Uh, infrastructure, where we cover the foundational logistics that allow these events to happen smoothly and safely. These include things like barricades for road closures, portable restrooms, Wichita police officers for security and traffic control, and park maintenance staff who help with setup, breakdown and ongoing cleanup throughout the event. Uh, Fan Fest is a perfect example of where park maintenance was continually on-site between setting up, uh, during the event, changing out the, um, not receptacles, uh, Gary. The trash cans, the polyarts, that's what I was looking for. And second, we have operations. This includes, uh, the postcards that we send out to notify neighborhoods of street closures, general maintenance supplies, and the many behind-the-scenes logistics that keep everything running, like signage, staging and rental equipment. Uh, the third group is entertainment, which is often the visible and exciting part for the community. These expenses include live performers, inflatables, fireworks displays, holiday lights, giveaway items, and event-specific materials like candy for Candy Crawl or t-shirts for volunteers. Altogether, these components represent a significant investment, but they're what transform an open space into a memorable experience that people look forward to year after year. While these events do require strong investment of time and resources, we're very intentional about minimizing costs wherever possible without sacrificing the quality or reach of our program. First, we developed several cost reduction strategies that make a big difference. Uh, we have sponsors, so we're fortunate to have the support of local businesses and organizations who share a vision for community engagement. These sponsors contribute financially, and in return, they gain visibility at our events and align, aligned with, uh, meaningful costs. Sponsor examples would include Evergy, who is our presenting sponsor for Red White and Boom. Um, you may have also noticed Raising Cane's was one of our sponsors for Red White and Boom, and we helped promote, uh, their grand opening that was happening, uh, a week before Red White and Boom. And we got a ton of exposure for them through those social media posts that we put out through all of our platforms. Um, at Open Streets, we have great annual support that happens year over year from, uh, companies like Mayor Trust, Coke Industries, Fidelity Bank and Blue Cross Blue Shield, just to name a few. Um, then we look at donations. Uh, these come in many forms, whether it's bags of candy for Candy Crawl, hot cocoa for Winter Wonderland, or even volunteer hours contributed by individuals and service groups. Every donation, large or small, helps stretch our budget further. Uh, then we have vendor fees. At events like Open Streets ICT, we invite food truck organizations and other local vendors to participate. Their re, res, registration fees provide us with a modest source of revenue that directly offsets operational costs. This method also allows recently, uh, or this method was also used recently at Fan Fest with six food trucks and one food truck vendor, where we were able to collect revenue to offset costs of that event. And finally, we have in-kind trades. This is where we really maximize relationships in the community. We've traded things, uh, like promotional media, videos or sports facilities and materials, all without needing to spend money from our event budget. It's a win-win approach that keeps dollars in the community while supporting our events. Uh, by using these four strategies, sponsorship, donation, vendor income and in-kind trade, we're able to offer high-quality free events to the public while being smart and responsible with our city resources. A recent example is our partnership with Shields. Uh, we needed to purchase twenty-five kayaks for our Floating on the River program that happens on the Arcanis River from July to September. Shields provided us with a discount to purchase sixteen kayaks for, it was, uh, forty-nine ninety-five. And then they donated the other nine kayaks to us, and in kind, we gave them use of Watson Park so they could hold, uh, staff meetings and offer, um, training for their staff on their, uh, water, uh, products. So they just had a training out there, I believe it was last week, where, um, they were on the stand-up boards out on the water with their team, learning how to use that, so they could better sell it to customers. So as we wrap up, I wanna take a moment to highlight why these free community events matter so much, not just for the partner recreation department, for, for the entire city. These events are more than just fun gatherings. They help to build stronger neighborhoods by creating shared experiences that foster civic pride and connection among residents. Whether it's families dancing at Red White and Boom, or our neighbors walking together at Open Streets ICT, these events bring people together in meaningful ways. They also encourage active, healthy lifestyles by getting people outside, moving and engaging with their community, something we know that is vital to public health and well-being. And beyond that, we're proud to say that these, but, these events support small businesses, food vendors and local artists by giving them a platform to reach new audiences. Every booth, performer or local sponsor is a chance to strengthen Wichita's creative and entrepreneurial spirit. And as you can see here, this is Shields today delivering the twenty-five kayaks out to Watson Park. So we just got our brand new kayaks. So pretty exciting. Um, so, stand for any questions?
Those kayaks just ran in through the park and not.
Angela, you're up.
Um, no, right now, we don't actually rent kayaks out. Um, it's only through the self-service stations, but we're actually transitioning that.
Oh, interesting.
Everybody. I have to do the introduction, right? I'm Angela Buther, Army Recreation Superintendent. I'll be presenting on the recreation tradition. Um, we have the Great Plains Nature Center. Um, we have Walk with Wildlife at the Great Plains Nature Center, which was held on Saturday, June the seventh. This fun friendly, or this fun, family-friendly event brought in nine hundred fifty-seven people closer to nature. Guests met, uh, native Kansas wildlife up close, including baby puffins, baby skunks, deer bombs. And you know how precious are those? Um, franks, snakes, turtles, bald eagles and more. Kids also enjoyed free fishing and archery, thanks to the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and the Flatland Fly Fishers. Uh, the Great Plains Nature Center is hosting a land work unit for the first time ever. Our new team member through the program is helping out in big ways, including helping with animal care and weekly programs. This, uh, they will have a great team. They have a great teamwork attitude and they're always ready and willing to help, however, help us see it. Most of the help of this program is free. We do not have to pay the, anything to come out and work our programs. A lot of times, I actually come back later and volunteer, um, not being in the program later on. Uh, America the Beautiful, Pumped Lands, Acorns, Paffs are available at the Great Plains Nature Center on Mondays and Thursdays, ten AM to one PM. In June, eighty-seven paffs were issued, including twenty-four military and twelve accidents issued at no charge. Oh, they're Watson Park. Um, Watson Park hosted a law camp, June twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, with over two hundred fifty people in attendance. Um, they've had several school groups for the month of June to not participate in programming out there, using the playground, the paddle boats and obviously miniature golf. Uh, the Central County Democratic Party Town Hall meeting was hosted at Hidden Venue on June the fifth. Um, they had a Good Kind Car Show, which was held on June the eighth, and Rock Edmond was around a hundred and fifty in attendance. Um, Watson, Watson hosted, uh, Comic Club Destruction, yearly employee appreciation party for the second year straight. Boston Recreation Center has been holding multiple special week camps. Um, they've had a great turnout with only one camp being canceled due to slow numbers, and that was the medieval time camp. They've held Junior Chef, Video Game Live, Top Shops, Messy Science, Camel Camp and Animal Planet. The tech camps are done well as well. Uh, we've already held camps such as Video Game Design, Movie Maker, iCode, iGame Creators, Gaming and Coding and Gamers Paradise. These camps are half-day camps and we go two per week with one in the morning and one in the afternoon. There's already a. There's already over one hundred and seventy-four teams enrolled in these camps. I would have looked up a little bit, they've already got about sixty-five enrolled now for the next session, which is great. USD two-five-nine group service free lunch program, last couple of years, a struggle with attendance. So this part, this year so far, we've been consistently serving forty to fifty kids. To keep it there, we have to have over twenty-five, so they're very pleased about the program. This program helps ensure kids in the neighborhood get fed in a safe and fun environment. Hello, Woodard. Woodard has started a new partnership with bringing back roller skating to the old messette, the old Woodard basement. We just started this partnership between Flow and Skate. We've held two drop-in sessions in the month of June. Each drop-in session was held for an hour, for twelve dollars per person. This new partnership will be extended to the fall session. This is an amazing opportunity to get people, especially in the community that used to skate at the facility, back into the facility. The girl on the bar site, she actually grew up participating in programming at Lynette Woodard. She wanted to come back and do a program with us there, so. She's got a great following, she does a lot of programs at Wichita State and at Carousel Skate. Lynette Woodard had a record-setting number of new participants enrolled in walk-off-of-the-way classes, which is a forty-five-minute class of six weeks. Twelve students enrolled, which deteriorated over two hundred and four in revenues. Literally just emailed me and asked about limited attention for the class, so it was very convenient to move ahead and do a full program. Lynette Woodard Recreation Center Summer Camp sees the purpose for no violations from the KTH during this year's summer health department session. This is the thirteenth year of no violations. Aquatics, continue operations at six pools, each slash paths, three were down to get maintenance, and one of them's out for this season. Lincoln's out due to vandalism. There was some heads cut off and some bricks that got taken. We finished certifying all staff, Slatter Path got certified in the business of driving, adult child CPR, and AED, lifeguards, CPR for professional rescue work, and they did adult ed and then AED. We hosted two swim meets at Haley Pool, over three hundred, four hundred, over three hundred to four hundred in attendance at each meet, including a hundred participants. We just completed sessions one and two of swimming lessons.
Questions?
We foresee closing pools this year, and we had to close early last year because of drought, so.
Yeah, we're still looking at the same time frame that we're going to be stopping at August the first, just with the current schedule that we had last year.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Angela. All right, Jesse, you're up, sir.
Good afternoon. So, just dapping in, looking at our numbers through the month of June, year-to-date. So I think I made the comment that there was no way we were going to make up rounds, because what we lost earlier in the year. I'd forgotten we closed tech for six weeks last year, so we had six weeks of no rounds of tech, so. Throw that out the window, if we pass it, we're back ahead again for the year, so. But yeah, everything very, very strong on the rounds, we're up about four thousand from last year.
So basically by next month, you're going to be over the, over twenty-three's, roughly. Both of us do it.
Yeah, we close, yep. Yep, June rounds alone, we did, we beat last year about five thousand rounds, so. We're extremely busy in June, and we have, obviously, we had rain, we had a lot of rain in June, so. To be able to keep those rounds up and get the benefit of that rain was, was a very positive month for us, so. Very happy with how that worked. Car rings were up a lot now with all that, those extra rounds. So, car rounds were looking really good, a hundred and twenty percent over last year, and fifty-five thousand over twenty-three, so very happy we're up with that. Food and beverage, we're up thirty-five thousand over last year at this point. Again, food and beverage, the second half of the year is kind of the stronger half for us, because typically you can play all the way through December, January, February, and where we lose a round, so. A hundred and eleven percent compared to last year, so F and B's going strong. Driving ranges are most dead even last year. This summer last year, we know we were open every day. The ranges are, when it rains, that's the thing that remains closed the longest, so that, you know, if we would have been open without that rain, December's would have been way up. So again, with the rain being, say, even last year, very happy with that. Merchandise sales, we are holding in on last year, again, we had that big, I mean, you want to call it a fire sale at Auburn to get rid of the merchandise that's left there. So, to be even more something, very happy with that. The shops are all looking good, guys have done a great job. Total revenue, looking at June of one, it's eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. Again, several days that we were closed, Auburn was underwater probably. The front island was underwater probably five or six times, because it's in the flood plain, so even after the rain, it continues to rise in that area, so. Very good month considering some of the challenges. We have a lot of trees that were down, so we were constantly finding limbs that were down, trying to get them cleaned up and out of the way for golfers. Fortune helped tremendously, thank you to you and your crew. Year-to-date, we're at three, just over three point three million, I need to put calm, I can't do the, three point three million. Last year, we were at three point two, so we're close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over last year. And as Brandon said, the expenses are down from last year at this point, so. Pretty, pretty happy with everything. The project funds hasn't really changed, we haven't done any new big projects since last meeting, so. The only thing, the equipment fund and the car fund, again, they change every day. The equipment fund is actually higher than what this shows now, I think we just added thirty-five, thirty-two or thirty-five thousand to that from the, from the green piece, so. All the project funds are looking very strong, and a couple of quick updates. We have our competitive junior tour, we're on, we just, yesterday was week five. Next week is the last regular season event, it's at SAM, and then we go to the Wichita Cup, like the finals. We've got, every week, we have a full field, we've got seventy to eighty kids showing up. It's a lot of fun, it's, it's, it's fun watching year to year, those kids that started when they were eight, now they're two, twelve, thirteen, and how their games progressed, but. We've got couples tournament this weekend at Auburn, just lost, a lot going on, we're in the final, we've got two weeks left of Wichita Junior Golf. First season, they're crank at their fault, or their summer and fall programming, so. There's a lot going on, there are days when we had over a thousand people come through, kind of last week, we had one day, it was twelve hundred and fifty-eight booked around. Total, and we ended up with just over a thousand, with calculations and different things, but. Locking the door, that doesn't count, all the people hitting our pool, so. Pretty happy with everything so far, so I'll take any questions that you might have.
Amazing. Thank you. All right, you're up, sir.
That'd be the easiest meeting we've ever had. Don't shake us.
Before I get in.
Hey, Gary.
The trees look great.
The challenge accepted.
These look great, Gary.
I wish they were true. My goodness.
Things considered a bunch more.
Our, our production, I went back and looked at last, last slideshow. And this has everything to do with the number of storms we had, but our inspections have over, more than doubled. Protonings are more than double, true removals are just almost at double. Emergency tasks are double. And our. Close laws, not as many as last month, but that's because we're leaving everything side of the road to have to come back and get later, because we're just trying to open streets, get things off houses, et cetera, so. What this also does not capture, because the process is not complete yet, but about midway through June, some of the works, streetmates started helping us with haulage, so we haven't hauled as much as they have. So this doesn't capture what they have done, I'll report on that next month. But for most of June, our forestry staff are working twelve hours a day, seven days a week, so. That's how a lot of this got increased in production, right? Takes more time, but the, the need was there, the need is still there. We are in better shape than we were, but we have a long way to go, and, you know, we always need more rain, but we can do with a lot of wind. So, our. Hitty that we're scheduled is just the same, it's, we're handling the emergencies, the high priorities, and go from there. Construction special projects, as per usual, buckle up. If they're busy. I know we talked about this last meeting, but the job that the team did and the coalition of various work groups that came together to clean up from the flood damage that happened right before the ribbon cutting clap was fantastic. I wasn't surprised, because I knew it was probable, possible, you know, all the things, but it was, it was beautiful to see. We had several different work groups come together, they came in, they jumped in, everybody did exactly what they needed to do in the order that needed to be done. There was great leadership on, onsite, and they just pushed through to get it cleaned up. And then we had a very successful ribbon cutting, so the guys did, and gals did a great, great job. So. I did want to give them all a shout-out for that, but anyway, as I've been talking, you've probably been reading through this. The crew, the visibility, we had, didn't have a lot of rain, so we had to close the river three different times. Lots of repairs. There are several repairs that have been made on the Avery Sunset Trail, there's more to be done. We repaired the IBE deck there at Nasser Park, there's some underlayment that's deteriorating, and that's causing some trip hazards, we've been working on that. There's more of that to come. We didn't rip everything up and replace all the underlayment, but there's a certain place gathering water, and it wasn't draining right, so. It was a problem, we put back some better material than what was there to begin with. Graffiti removal, we always talk about that. Downhill Skate Park, Haley Skate Park, Orchard Skate Park, Plainview, the bypass, Fairmount, and Plainview again. I don't know if we did it twice, or if that's, but lots of graffiti, and you heard the chief earlier, there's graffiti on their buildings as well. If you drive around the city, you're going to see it, so we respond to that as, as it comes to us. Additional work includes the installation of the recognition hitching post out at Pontiac Prairie. You guys approved that, and that got done. That went really well. The, the group that had requested that was very, very happy, so that was really nice. We got a couple of other things here. We get all kinds of crazy requests, say crazies, I mean, it's not, they're not legitimate, it's just. Immersive thing, we don't always get a lot of good information. We get a call one morning about a stick in a drain, and it's a trip hazard in Fairmount. Fairmount's a big place, so, fresh crew, or at least a member or two go out, Fairmount, they scour the park, they find out what's going on. There were some drains that were tampered with, they fixed the problem, it's done. But it's like, we didn't have a lot of information to go off of, and that's. It's, it's kind of a daily thing. But our, our crew works really hard at. Getting done what needs to get done. Let me get back to the, yeah, here's the one I was on. Twelve different park close signs, so as times subsided in the ordinance and all that good stuff subsided with the SAM, to help with the enforcement of the gates closing and closing on time. So, got those fabricated and installed, I drove by, they're, they're, they look good, I mean, they're signs, but they look good, and they're on fairly high posts, hopefully that limits the vandalism, so we'll see about that. Lots more, I'm not going to go through all of these, each and every one, you can see this, you can refer back to it, but safe to say, the construction and special projects group is extremely busy. Eighty-three playground safety inspections. And all the rest that we did, prioritizing the safety inspections, when you go through our playgrounds. You might find a little problem here, but the big problems, we're going to find, because we're on top of it. I'll tell you that. I toured several of the parks with Brett Russell, the supervisor and screw, and looked at some of the flood damage that we had with the. Oh, what's it called, this is the mulch covering, engineered wood fibers, what's it called? Several of our playgrounds still have engineered wood fiber, and the flood just absolutely messed it up. Either A, washed away, or B, the fiber has a foam underlayment, and the water causes the foam to. Rise to the top, and then the fiber gets underneath, so it's a problem. We've been looking at some solutions to that issue, and some of our playgrounds have been closed, we've got those posted on our website simply because of that problem, but we have additional wood fiber on order, and we are going to utilize a different system in one of the parks as that underlayment, and possibly adding a reserve hang to catch off some of that runoff or, in the case of another flood. So, it's, it's a lot to deal with, but we're taking it head-on, and. But one leg at a time, right? Additional activity. Brett's there, I gotta get into it, he's there. You know, one of the things that we did is partnered with the water department. They did a project to help us, but. More than just us, but at the Herman Hill Water Center, they installed a. Resurrected pump that supplied the sand pipe that takes the non-potable water that's being discharged into the river that's been treated already. And we utilized that water for water increase, or other purposes, landscape purposes. But they installed a pump to improve flow, and it's all an additional hydrant. So it's much simpler now to acquire that water out of that facility. It's faster, it's more efficient, and multiple trucks can be filled at the same time with their work that they did. And so Brett's team went in with that second hydrant and saw ballers surrounded, installed a non-potable water science. And you got that, and so that, that project is, is completely done. Providing showboils, picking tables for various groups, it's part of the support that we give to the community, and. Fixing this, all. Again, I'm not going to throw every bullet point on here, you can read as well. Coming up, we've got certain things that, on the schedule. Fence at the Bailey Corridor, that really goes right on the north side of Linkin Park in East and West. We have cars go through that. Where the dead end roads are, they'll bypass the crash-rated barriers and run straight through the dirt fence. And when they go through one side, they typically go through both. And in one particular case, the, what's listed here, they got it repaired, and within two weeks, another car went right through. So, sometimes we get police reports where there's witnesses or whatever, and then, you know, we can make a claim, we can see insurance. Other times, it's basically a run-through hit-and-run, nobody knows anything about it, we just know we have to repair it, so. It's a.
Getting yellow, hopefully, think?
Well, the crash-tested, the crash-rated barriers are, and we, I learned some history there, because it's happened before I got to this position, but the. I I learned some history there because it's happened before I got to this position, but the crash rated barriers were put in uh several years ago partnering with all the parks. Uh, we basically split the cost of doing that. Not cheap, but I think we missed it by about four on each end. Uh, but if you did that, then you any possibility of gaining access to the area with maintenance trucks. Uh, so it's a it's a challenge. It's a challenge, but the uh the crash ballers still look good. If that's if that's still alive. Part maintenance, part maintenance has been busy. They've been working on tree debris as well in all their assigned areas. Um, there's this the Red Roof Boom, uh, we did the street closure uh for that. I wanted to mention another thing. I think it's right here. Um, yes, this first bullet point dealing with trees. Um, the retained maintenance, athletic maintenance crews, uh, they jumped in on McAdams Park prior to the June eighth event and we just had that storm force trees completely inundated. Uh, but those crews jumped in and cleared the area, made sure that the area was safe for that event to take place and that way, uh, no, he's got injured. Uh, we had no interruption of the event at all that I'm aware of and uh just made it look better for the event. There were still some trees down for that event, but I don't think that hindered uh the overall of it, at least not that I remember of. So I appreciate their uh jumping in to do that. Uh, kind of at a last minute uh notification, but they're really good. Everybody a great favor of that. So I appreciate that. Um, retained maintenance crew, they've been helping support the uh uh preparation uh division events as well as assisting a tanner camp crew. Um, the tanner camp crew goes in ways. Sometimes they're busier than others. Uh, and so when we can, we utilize resources from the retained maintenance crew to help with that. Uh, athletic crew, they're busy with tournaments, so they're preparing fields on a daily basis. Uh, and also we crew, they're right now, they're working in Johnson grass at that time of year. Uh, we have a lot of different areas that we're trying to keep that under control. And the tanner camp crew, uh, of course, they're, like I said, they're it's it's an habit of flow on how busy they are. Um, we don't necessarily, it's not a machine where hot pumps out, you know, two or three notifications per day. It just it comes and it goes. So uh we we take them on as we go. Um, we haven't pulled out the outliers to do the complete analytics on on the information, but we did a quick study of the time from we received the notification that a camp has been posted to the time that a camp's been cleaned up. And even with some outliers, uh, because the camp takes a long time to clean up, say, Sam took six days. Uh, some other camps have taken uh, well, they're just their big sites. Maybe there's a another barrier that has caused us to delay, but it's still less than four days, just right about three and a half days from notification to clean up, which I personally think that's pretty good. So if we take the outliers out, it's probably three days or less for us to get to uh getting done. So, um, I think that is it and I will say if there are any questions.
I just have a one more thing for your to-do list.
There is plenty of room on it.
Next, the tree next to the pile of limbs that Chris from Ducks and I piled up for you.
Wow.
Okay. There's an elm tree there. One more storm, you're probably gonna be picking that thing up too. Cause the limbs we picked up from that tree, they were all hollow inside. The tree looks like it's probably hollow too.
Okay. Um, I'll get it with you. Get a better location and whoa.
Corner of Meadowline, Chris. You'll notice it because there's a big cow there for you.
Here he is. Trees are coming down. How quickly?
Oh, that's very
I ask because I feel like this is a conversation we have every year, but how quickly are we replanting for those trees?
For our moving plant, zero, like the dry roster.
Okay.
And I talked several different times prior to drought restrictions, how we were moving forward with uh new techniques, uh planting smaller trees, not having to do much input on watering them, that kind of thing. And we had really had a lot of momentum building up to making that a going from a uh an internal pilot to maybe sharing that with some volunteer groups, so volunteers to go plant trees on our behalf. Uh, and so we we kind of basically had to start over again with that uh process, but in my mind, I'm thinking that for the budget that we have and had been spending on the two-inch Walden bird life trees, I'm thinking that we can multiply our trade count by a factor of three to five uh per year. So where we were planning, you know, twelve hundred, I'm expecting that we probably could get anywhere from four to six thousand in the ground in a given year with a different method. Um, there's still things to work out in that process, but to recover what we've lost, I think that's the direction that we're gonna have to go in order to make that up for future generations. But we've had success with that process. House wall park was the really big pilot and it's been really successful.
Yeah.
Uh, is it gonna be successful everywhere we tried? I don't know. Most things aren't, but uh I think that there's evidence enough of success with the trees living, which ultimately is your desire, right? But also the volume of trees that you can put into the community with the same number of dollars. I think there's enough evidence that it's worth tracking that down and 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 running that into the future to to see what we can give them. Thank you. Any else?
All right.
You have Mr. Thompson here to present.
Welcome, sir. Absolutely.
We'll just apologize. I was risen to show up early at three o'clock at university and started.
Oh, you're good.
Yes, yeah. If y'all, if y'all aren't familiar, uh, we a long time ago, there we go. Y'all approved Eagle Project for Eagle Strong Agent Trail out by Campus High School. And and working with you guys, we were able to get it successfully put up a couple of months. So here's just some results to that. Uh, our overview, when I first came in, a man of Texas led wood chips on wet parts of the trail, cleaning up the trail in general, taking the plastic out. Uh, cement posts, cement about, I think, eighteen posts into the trail with informational signs. And then to plan that, we set up three different workdays, led a bunch of different people, including my voice scout troop and the environmental club and I B students from campus high school. And uh originally it was about, it was gonna be seven hundred and fifty dollars, but we ended up getting some donations for concrete, different things. And it all would be about two fifty. Uh, so for the first workday, we included with I B environmental club students with two goals, laying the wood chips throughout the first two hundred yards of the trail, because that was the moneyest parts and pick up all the trash. And then on the second workday, the most, oh, sorry, those are the pictures from first one, action photos and a nice four after right there. Uh, a lot of wood chips, two dump trucks were all in a quarter to five hours. Uh, and then second workday, we did it with voice scout, my voice scout troop, a lot of people came out to help with two goals of cement, making the trail dry well first, because we had to get a truck down there to deliver all the cement there and make sure we had all the tools and we didn't want to carry back and forth and then cementing the eighteen posts with the ground. So I'm sure y'all are familiar with Nate McClure. He helped us a lot operating the auger and then we had voice scouts mix of concrete and learn how to use some of that. Just a couple of nice photos. Then on the right, some of the brush that because of those huge storms had blown over a bunch of brush on the trail that we had to clean up, and that's why we had to split it up into a third workday. So doing it all in two. And then our third workday was just meeting the beneficiary, which is Paul Sturz, the environmental teacher at campus, where we put in the remaining signs on the posts and took the final salt pictures. So there's some of those. Each post has a different informational sign about different things. Uh, on the right, this is kind of an example. I know it's kind of our way, but about fresh water ponds teaches the community about a different, about a bunch of different parts of the trail and overall looks really nice now and it'll be used for many years to come. It was recently mowed. It was a little bit overgrown, but recent mowed and looks really, really nice now. Uh, so that's it. Again, huge thank you to you guys. You guys are a huge part of that, extra that in the process. If you have any questions, I can answer up here.
Congrats. It looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. No, thank you for your work. That's amazing. Awesome. Um, Brandon is not here and I don't have the president's update, but I know uh Brett's just got some really exciting news.
So I want to kind of give an update on several things that we have going on. I know that we mentioned some of them earlier. This is an opportunity to kind of brag on our team and a lot of the good work that we actually do. So one of the things that uh came about from Gary and our team, Jeremiah that does all of our uh online uh support for showing what maintenance we do, what interior cleanup cleanups that we have, had the idea of being able to spotlight all of the partnerships that we actually have in the community. So he's gonna actually put that on the website where it shows uh where they're pinpointing the community, what type of projects they actually help us support. And you noticed earlier we're showing a spotlight and we use those for quite a bit to help offset some of our budget and maybe extend some of the program and services that we have. So we thought it would be a good way to show the community where all those partners are and how we work within in a different way. So something that we're moving forward on. Uh, Brandon mentioned earlier about uh some of the savings that we had and the rec side and how we're actually doing with uh increased revenue and lowering our expenses. I'm sure you guys remember the uh probably been about two years ago now that we had the approval to move forward with the non-resident fees that we implemented. And I think that is the part of why we're seeing the increased revenue with the uh the less expenses. So kind of put in uh context from last year this time to this year, uh, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more in revenue and ninety thousand dollars less in expenses. So that goes to show that, you know, what we implemented and kind of what we envisioned with implementing that is uh actually kind of showing some of the fruits of the labor, we'll be able to do that with the increase in revenue and lowering some of our expenses that we have. Another big thing that we're working on right now uh is uh of course the parking rest plan. Uh, so we're getting to the phase now that uh we're gonna be reaching out to vendors to uh hopefully begin negotiations to see uh what the next steps are. Uh, once we do that, we're gonna have a steering committee that we will have to help kind of guide those efforts. And a big portion of that is gonna be community engagement. So part of that, we are wanting to make sure that there are opportunities in each of our six districts that we get out to get feedback from the community. And one of the things that was real, that was really emphasized in uh through that process was making sure that once we gather information that we are sharing what we can or can't do with the available resources where we are. And one of the things that was brought out during that process was looking at some of the national average of what they spend per capita uh in the other communities compared to our community. And the national average is about a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and five dollars per person. We're at seventy-four dollars per person. So that kind of gives you a point of reference on how we're investing back into our community. I think that's part of what we need to share is that we have to look at what resources we have and what we're available to what we can do with the available resources, because the thing that we emphasize is that nothing more frustrating to the community is gather feedback on things that they want to see happen and we don't have the funds to be able to do it.
Well, sort of like uh when we were doing your interview process before you became the full club director, right? You're gonna be one of those individuals and talk about our our committee is like three quarters the size of yours and we have bigger budget than you do. Right? So I mean, it's
It it shows up in what we're actually doing and I think it's giving a realistic uh uh picture of where we are and what we can do with the resources that we have and not get people's thoughts into the hope of what we can do uh moving forward. So we're excited about that to be able to get that up and going and by next month, we're gonna get a little bit more details on what the next steps are and and uh who the members would be on that committee. Uh, Jesse mentioned earlier, uh, office doing really well. Uh, they finished up everything over at Sims with the uh irrigation system there. Looking forward to going to Mac next. And part of that process is looking at how potentially makes some improvements to the blockers and things there onsite as well. So once we get the irrigation system in place that we have, kind of everything in place for the course to be able to make sure it's successful. So Jesse and his team have done a really good job with that. Been real pleased with the contractor that we've used. And the next big thing is uh Brewer Community Center. Uh, so we're moving along really well on that project and we're projecting to be at a substantial completion uh towards the end of September. Uh, then at that point, we'll be able to start looking at moving in, we're getting the equipment and getting everything in place with the goal of having uh kind of our uh grand opening, a grand reopening in a conjunction with the District One breakfast and a tour of the facility. And then looking at starting programming uh that following Monday. So a lot of exciting things going on and a lot of good work that our team is doing. And one of the things that we want to make sure we highlight it uh above Katie and Shannon is seeing all the work that they do behind the scene to make sure our programs are successful. And then once we're doing that, we're able to track the impact that we actually have. So Shannon was able to show how we're actually doing the work that we're doing. And then Katie's come back to be able to track how it's being uh used and the impact we have in the community. So we're always looking at alternative ways that we can look for funding and showcase what we're doing to to make an impact in the community. And our big goal is to show that uh, yes, we uh create a lot of good fun activities, but we also have a big economic impact on the community as well and being able to tell that story. So people know that uh we contribute to that as well.
Appreciate you, Reggie. You, yeah, no, I'm really proud of the work you're probably doing. You've got a great team. All right, let that, what's your?
I did want to note real quick, um, I'm also on the Friends of Kansas Wildlife exhibit. We had our pagoda kickoff kind of on Saturday. But it stormed and rained for the two hours over the weekend. That was the exact same as our timeframe for that. So we're doing it again uh the next weekend uh this coming Saturday at three P M and kind of doing a more official thing, but still got some nice publicity. Reggie showed up, good in the blue park polo and everything. So, yeah, uh, nice to have some people out there.
Now you get the Dwight, the one, did you nod?
Oh, yeah. So there was the big sort of very public one through Evergy, which did a lot of grassroots campaigning. Fidelity's given some money. We've had a few other kind of donors who are staying anonymous right now. We're about halfway to two thirds of the way through our goal already. Really trying to get community support to get us over through that home stretch. So actually, yeah, doing a lot better than we'd hoped and it's fun to see inside of it. It was open for the first time in a long time and park had helped clear it out and everything. I didn't know there was that much space in there, so it was pretty cool.
The fundraising goal for it?
Uh, about two hundred K. And Park Foundation, obviously. I don't know why I didn't say that up top, but uh they they give a good amount of money as well to get us going.
And did you mention Reggie? Sorry, the uh the bricks are for sale now. We can all buy bricks for
Yeah, so we actually kicked off our uh brick campaign for the Barry Sanders football complex. We'll put Shannon on the spot here to talk a little bit about it since she helped put it in place for us.
So we are asking uh anyone in the community, uh, even outside of the community in the cross station, anybody who wants to pledge two hundred dollars to purchase a brick and have it engraved. Um, and it will be placed at the uh forefront of the Barry Sanders statue at the football complex.
Yeah, you can actually go online and uh make your commitment there. And then once we have the commitments, we'll be reaching out to everyone to start placing the order at one book order at uh at the same time to get everything set up once we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, everybody. All right, um, Nate, you, how how do we want to schedule this? Uh, will you and or will I guess, well, Alex, will you reach out to everybody like a doodle tool or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, just propose a time and just keep it focused on.
Do you want Tim Callens on that? He was asking about it. Tim Callens about the
Oh, uh.
Asking about it. And I was just like, we have
The naming thing?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I think he can go if he wants to, but it's
I think we're fine and we'll get Reggie on there. Hey, I was going to ask you.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're good.
Hat blocked this way.
Oh, no, you're good. Not related to the park, but. I booked it back, I want to put that bucket here.
Oh, yeah, and I forgot.